Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Already approved.
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, just an update on RSU 21, um, a district meeting.
Anything else, anybody? Motion approved with that amendment?
Chair.
All in favor? Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a food truck application DBA Gemini cakes. Does anybody here that like to comment on food truck application? Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Title four is public forum. Anybody want to bring an issue to before the board that is not already slated for us to discuss here this evening?
Not even funny, anyone? Diane Robins Mokis. I watched the last public hearing. It was less than stellar. I don't think that, I don't know if you guys watched it after the fact, but it almost comes across that you were bartering with him, which we are not supposed to do. He's not in compliance. I don't know what the planning board can do for him because he's still not compliant and he's not the only piece not in compliance. I can't, from my notes, I can't figure out if there's still three pieces not in compliance out of the four or if there's still four pieces. Looks to me like one piece got settled, but the other three areas of the consent agreement haven't been settled. And I have the maps with me if you want to see them. I brought the consent decree. I brought the maps of the place. Are any of you aware of the postings that went up on Laurel Loop today?
Yes, they're all aware, but I provided a call.
And we just let the sheriff post town road?
No, posting road, Diane.
What's he posting?
He's posting his interest in his property that the road lies on. That's what he's posting.
Well, I think we all know what's going to happen with this. It's going to end up going poor. I'm going to reiterate what I said probably a month, month and a half ago. We need to have a process for consent decrees to log them, keep track of the fact of whether or not they've been satisfied or not. I don't know how many building permits were given out after the consent agreement went out in 1995. I suspect there may have been, but we also have to make sure because one of the things that the planning board said is that they can say that the subdivision meets their criteria, but they said in one of their meetings, but once it goes to the person who has to give the permit, he can't give a permit because there's an issue with the subdivision. So is our new person who's giving out building permits aware of the fact that Clearview has several issues in that consent agreement that has been met?
I'm not understanding your question. I mean, Clearview has already been built out. There are no other permits that are being issued in Clearview at this time. So I don't understand the question.
You send it back to the planning board. The planning board already did, said that their, their application was complete. I'll say it again. I don't understand how an application may be complete if you have no road.
The application was not complete, Diane. The planning board couldn't look at it because there's a non-conforming issue. So the planning board has been directed by this board to not review.
I want to go back and look at the planning board and meetings because the planning board meetings in one of them said that their application was complete.
On, wait a minute, on what? On the hammerhead or on, on his subdivision extension?
The subdivision.
His subdivision extension. That, that's incorrect. The planning board did not approve that. The planning board could not make it complete. If there's a non-conformant, the planning board had to stop discussion because there's a policy that if there is a non-conformant, they can't take up an application.
Well, then I'm going to go back and watch it because I could have sworn that we were meeting after the public hearing that they said their application, they said their application was complete. And this is why I'm saying is I don't care if an application is complete. If there is an issue in the subdivision and there's a non-conforming or a legal issue with it, I don't know how we can even say it's complete as long as we've got something out there hanging in the breeze. Now I have no idea what he's asking for. First it was 15, now he's saying 10. Now he wants to put an eyebrow and I'm looking at the road and I'm like, I'm not even sure how he's going to put a 50-foot road in an eyebrow. But I did hear some discussion in one of the other meetings about the fact that this was a civil issue. So is the expectation, because he wants to put a road through his lot, that all of the, all of the people within the development have to start a lawsuit against him for putting in a road where there was no road in the subdivision originally?
If, if it violates deed restrictions, otherwise than that, what are ideas? I don't believe there's any other grounds for that, right?
Okay, so this is where we're trying to understand and I'm trying to understand and as much as I know about some of this stuff, I have to come to you guys to give me. You've got a lot of experience with the planning board and so do you. So when this go, when they go now in front of the planning board?
First of all, he can't come to the planning board. There's still a non-conformant issue. The planning board won't take up his application.
I think the planning board could take up the application, declare it complete and they say we can't act on it. That's what the process.
Maybe, maybe, yeah, that, that could be very lawsuit.
All right. So they said it was complete, but we can't act on it because of the non-conformant issue.
That's fair.
So now that we have these signs up at Laurel Loop, so apparently people can't go down there on something.
Excuse me, that doesn't stop people from going on the road.
They can still go on the road?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think we're just trying to.
Well, he's just, he's exercising his rights to the land underneath the road. If you read the, uh, the fee simple ownership, what he has to do, he'd have to convey that to us to get rid of his violation. He's now choosing not to do that. That's what he's choosing.
That's what it sounds, that's what we.
It's what it sounds like to me. So, you know, we'll have to wait and see what else comes forward, but.
Just trying to understand what's happening so we don't end up, those of us that don't, we need to know what we need to watch for, what the next steps are because there were some, as we go to the planning board, others said, as long as they're performing. And then there was some discussion about this is the only one. Well, it's not. But I think this reiterates what I said, and that is, is that when we get into consent decrees, we should have a database of them. We should have a database as to whether or not they've met the requirements to satisfy the things in the consent decree. If there's an issue within it that is going to stop someone from doing a development, getting a permit, then I think that that also has to be brought to the person who's doing the permits so that we don't end up with somebody getting a permit who shouldn't get one. Because if there's a.
You would have an opportunity to object to that or somebody who had an interest in the butter or something like that. If a permit issued and you thought it's wrong, you can take it up with the code enforcement officer.
Right, but that, those cards only get to people who live within 300 feet. It doesn't, 500.
Right.
It doesn't go to the whole development.
No.
So if it's happening on lot one and he's on lot 13 or 14, then they may not know that this one is getting a permit.
You don't think there'd be communication among the neighbors?
So who it is, okay? I'm just saying that to give out permits, there should be some way to communicate to the person who gives out building permits that right now Clearview has an issue, period. Because it doesn't matter what kind of permit it is. They shouldn't have a permit because it's a non-compliance.
Well, you're only talking about a, a certain aspect of it. Say there was a building permit that could be issued on a lot that has nothing to do with any violations that are existing. He could issue a permit on that. The violations exist on, uh, according to the consent decree on 14, 13, and 54. So I think it's 13, 14, and 54. So, so, you know, um, other building permits, if they needed to be issued, that wouldn't prevent those from being issued.
That's not the way I understood it. I understood it.
I don't know.
It's the subdivision had a non-conforming or.
You gotta understand that subdivision was approved back in the eighties and the town agreed on the roads in 1988. Then we find out this and now we're trying to, back in 95, it should have been cleared up. It never got cleared up. That's the only issue that we have here remaining on this subdivision.
So, all right, so.
One at a time, okay, folks?
So, we need to deal with Mr. Thomas or not deal with him.
That's correct.
Either way. And then if he decides not to do anything or do something, then we, we would have to look at the other two areas that have not been signed over to the town.
Again, in my opinion, it's up to the owners of those properties now to decide whether or not they want to provide us fee ownership of those, simple ownership of those properties.
I, I respectfully disagree with that. I, I think we entered into a consent agreement in 1995 stating that we were going to acquire a title fee simple, what, I'm using the wrong words perhaps, of all of the areas where the road deviated onto property owned by.
Just those three lots.
That's what I'm saying.
But there are more in, in that subdivision.
I know.
Okay.
But, but the, I said that places where the road went was placed where it wasn't supposed to be. I, I don't think it's up to the property owners to fix that. I think it's up to the town to follow through on the consent agreement. Excuse me. I, I think it's, it's up to the town to follow through with that consent agreement, even though it is 30 years later, and do what we said we were going to do. Uh, and, and if the, if those property owners object to our doing that, then we address that, but I don't think we leave it up to them.
Well, that's the question I'm asking counsel at some point, you know, that's the question that I've asked. And we won't have that, and we won't have that answer until.
And now, now Mr. Mr. Thomas has taken legal action to block the town from doing what we voted on two weeks ago.
I, again, I don't know if you have the authority to do that quite yet.
To do which?
To, to exercise onto a new owner, something that was conveyed in 1995. I think that's the question. Um, whether we have the authority to do that.
And I think, folks, we've got to be real careful right here, right now. This is starting to smell. The odor of litigation is permeating here and we should not be discussing those things in public. We should wait to get counsel here and we should be ex parte.
I agree.
Good point.
But according to what I have from the consent decree, it was left for duals to do, which we know didn't have. So that's going to be left to the town. Then, and this is where I was asking about the lot sizes and how he could foot a 50-foot road through his lot. So according to the consent agreement on page 309, it says the town hereby agrees that those lots, 14, 15, and 54, which are reduced in lot size due to the above required covenances of the sections of traveled paved way shall retain the status of buildable lots with regard to lot size. So this is saying, I believe he's 14.
Yes, he's 14.
So lot 14, when this was consent decree was done, his lot was non-conforming in regards to size.
It was then. It may not be now. It's only one that's changed.
Division, a subdivision, maybe I'm been living in a different century, but my understanding is that once a subdivision has been brought forth and you've mapped out where your houses are supposed to go, those don't automatically change if you change what you require for a lot size because subdivisions are built differently. They're given different allowances for land. They're given different allowances for how many houses you can put on a piece of property because it's a subdivision. But I've never seen a subdivision go afterwards and everybody change their lot sizes in a subdivision because we changed the land use regulations.
Well, speaking from personal experience, I can tell you I've seen it and you're going to see more of it with the recent legislation that's been passed.
Exactly. LD 2003 will wipe that away.
Yep.
What's that? Okay, fill me in.
We don't have time for that and I don't even understand it at all. Right.
Your legislatures.
Right.
Should I be surprised? But anyway, so this is what we're up against. So at this point, we just have to wait and see what's going to happen. You guys are aware of what happened with the postings, but you're saying that this does not stop anybody from using the roof. It's simply been.
At this point, no.
He's having one of his little hussy fits and he's like, have the sheriff post it all. Okay.
And we weren't bartering with him at the last meeting. He came to us with a proposal and we said, this is, this is not our purview. You need to go in this rope. This is our purview. Our purview is getting that squared away and that's it. That's kind of pretty much what we said to him.
I didn't say you.
Hmm?
He was.
Oh, I mean, he has every right. You can come here and barter with us. You know, I mean, that's your right as, as a.
No.
We don't stop, we don't stop people from coming in here and asking and trying to do.
To tell you I want this. Don't bother.
Whatever, but he has every right to do what he was, what he did. And we, we went back to him and said, this is not, this is not our lane. We can't look at this. This is what you need to do. If you want to pursue this, this is what you need to do. And we kind of left it at that.
All right. So we'll watch and see what happens. Um, take it from there. How do you put myself?
Just leave it.
stays on.
Yes, just leave it.
Yeah.
I'm Stella McCormick. I live on, um, what street do I live on? No, I don't. Oh, God. Could you explain, could you explain that posting that went up? What is it actually saying or who's trying to protect what?
I don't understand it. I think he understands a little bit more, but I'm confused at what that's.
You know, the access or the, um, right to, um, utility access or a right of way. What is he trying to?
He's protecting his interest of the, of what he owns underneath the existing road.
So does he own, um, there's a utility access on the other side of his property?
I have no idea. I don't know about his utility access at this point.
So is he trying to protect the town from taking possession of any of that?
I think he's saying that he, he's not going to, in his mind, he doesn't want to convey anything.
He doesn't want to convey anything.
That's the way I read it.
All the consent decree.
Well, I mean, you can read it just the way I can. You can look at the statute and make your own interpretations. Again, we'll be waiting for the attorney to give us a little more guidance.
Yeah, we don't want to say anything.
He claims that the whole, all that cul-de-sac is his and he doesn't want anybody to be down there or walk on it. So I was just trying to understand what he was doing with this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this stops people from driving down there. I don't think this stops people from walking on that road, on the road, not his property, on the road.
Statute deals with a notice to prevent acquisition of an easement. Okay, there's specific statutory provision there. Uh, and he passed a post that in order, in order to extinguish an easement or tell people that there isn't one there anymore. But there's a lot of issues with that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for listening. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Public forum. Okay, we'll move on then. Approval of the July 14, 2025 minutes. Should be made to approve the minutes. Chip, anybody? Anybody discussed anything? All in favor then? Approved. Hey Dan, you've got something on the RSU?
Yeah, so, um, last Tuesday, um, we had the district budget meeting. Uh, there were a total of 18 articles? Yeah, total of 18 articles up for vote. Um, three articles, uh, came up for, uh, some pretty significant discussions. Article five, there was a motion to eliminate 177,000 and change, which is, they tried to earmark it towards the, um, HR position. Uh, that got voted down. And article six, there was a motion to, uh, remove 200 some odd thousand dollars for, for an open position. Uh, that got voted down. And then it was article nine, uh, was voted to eliminate 369,000, which are the SRO officers. Um, and then that got voted down. So all in all, every article, uh, went through and passed and, uh, we will be voting on that in a few weeks. So that's, our budget is now set on, or will be set on what this passed, so. It was 800 and 4, 840 some odd thousand dollars less than what the original one came out at. 847, I think was the number or somewhere right in that general range.
Okay, moving on to managers' report. Meeting with Port City or the fire chief.
Sure, just, uh, very briefly, as I've, um, the chief and I met with, uh, Port City architects last week, very briefly to not only go over the renderings that I've provided to you to post up there, um, but also some, um, some adjustments they had made, they thought within the, uh, the layout of the new facility. Uh, the chief and I, uh, more so the chief than me, uh, provided him some, them some thoughts about what the flow was and how the flow should be. So they were going to go back and make those changes and bring that forward. But I thought it was important, um, for us to at least take a look at the renderings and then, um, that's why I put them up and then, uh, perhaps get the committee back together to try solidify one of the renderings that we think may be, uh, best in line to move forward with so that way we can, uh, uh, begin to, uh, firm that up. In retrospect to that, I'll just, I'll just follow up on, um, my meeting with Mark LeBlanc. Uh, I came in to see me after my letters, uh, to him and his, uh, son. Um, we've, we've discussed the size of the fence and the length of the fence, where it will stop. Um, right now, um, we'll begin the process of getting some estimates for the fence erection once we have the trees down. Uh, we've marked all the trees uh, for removal and will, the public works will do that sometime, uh, either this week or perhaps next week, so. But I think, uh, if I don't, unless I hear strong objections, I'll, uh, I'll begin to coordinate a meeting of the committee uh, to go over the renderings and hopefully come to a determination where we have in terms of, uh, building design.
Questions, comments, folks? Okay, move on to business then. First item was a mass gathering permit here for the Heritage Days by the, uh, on the Historical Society.
Yes, traditionally, as you know, annually, the Historical Society comes forward with their, um, Heritage Days and looking for your, um, your approval once again for the, uh, for the, uh, permit in app, uh, that they're asking for, for the mass gathering permit.
Yeah, I hope that we approve it and waive the fee.
One favor.
Abstain.
I know. One abstention, Phil.
Let me send it down. I'll just send down the, uh, you know, I think you have copies, but I'll send down the, the last page of the permit so you can sign it.
Okay, the next item relates to, uh, request by the registrar to, uh, limit the hours for voter registration and the, uh, validation referendum election from 7:00 AM to 5:30, correct? This is typically what she asks, yeah.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Is, is this just for the August 28th?
Yes.
Vote on the RSU budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Second.
One favor? Do that too.
I'll send it on down. You can sign that one as well. Thank you.
Okay, the next item deals with recommendations for purchase of extrication tools. It's a mouthful. Chief, have some recommendations for us?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, so we have three, three bits here. Um, we demoed all these tools. That's what the cars were in the far slot at the station for. Uh, a recommendation is to go with FireTech and safety, the Ampus, would be the man at bachelor. One set of tools that ended up breaking. The vendor didn't want to come back. And then the other one is, uh, at $10,000 more, I don't think it's, which is essentially almost 33% more. I don't think it's worth the value.
Are you looking for the tool, the extended reach? Are you looking for the tool, the extended reach tips?
Yep.
Iron cutter and the batteries, right? Batteries and charger?
Yep.
Thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three and ten cents?
Yep.
And where are those funds coming from?
Uh, well, they'll be coming out of a company that is based out of, they, they have, uh, the main place is down in Massachusetts, but they have a place in Winthrop, Maine as well.
Okay.
So dealer would be in Winthrop, Maine.
All right. So if there's a problem, you just call them?
Yep.
All right. And what fund do we take the money from?
I believe it's capital reserve.
Capital. It's in capital.
So thi- this was in, in our budget for the current fiscal year?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, folks?
We'll make, we'll make a motion.
Okay. Quick question. I have to assume we had a tool that did this already?
Yeah. We have.
Breakware out?
We do have a, we have a tool. Um, I believe it's like, uh, fifteen, sixteen years old.
Andy, that's fine.
New, newer technology. Most people are going to the battery operator because then you can just throw the battery in, take it wherever. Our current system, we can only operate one tool at a time because of having a small, smaller power plant, which is essentially like the generator with a hydraulic pump on it. So this way, you can be spreading and cutting simultaneously, so.
I'm sorry.
Cutting, we can cut, spread.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve purchase of the extrication tool as recommended by the fire chief for the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three and ten cents to come out of the capital reserve fund. A second.
Through the discussion, questions? All in favor then?
Thank you, Chief.
How long before you'll get that?
Three, four is. So then, the fire chief, you're right, bring around any time. We just got, did he give that email to the truck? Should we go, service truck, should we go, anything with the parts? I need it, though. Okay, I'll call that, too.
Good. Next item, we've got an application to approve a food truck. DBA Gemini cakes. It's like a Vinegar Hill operation here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, I think all the paperwork is there, and then traditionally you always ask me um, on the August second and tenth, if there are more than, um, three food trucks that'll be there. There are not. These, this would be the only food truck on those days.
Are there, is, is there a truck that has a liquor license approved for those days for Vinegar Hill as well?
Not sure if there is or not. I have to look back at the applications that we received and whether or not one had liquor or not. Is that a concern?
I'm just, just, I'm just curious. I wanted to know the nature of
Oh, okay.
of the, of the food trucks that have been approved for Vinegar Hill.
I think their liquor license is if you go in, the food truck is in the front by the parking lot. And out back where they have that little sitting area, they do have like a bar out there. And I don't think any of the food trucks have liquor licenses that, that they use there. Because I think Vinegar Hill has its own, uh, little bar area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So both dates, August two and tenth, they're the only ones there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve Gemini cakes for August second and tenth.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor then? So be it. And we've got a liquor license application for catering operation, Tin Can Cocktail Club LLC.
Yes, I, I believe this is for a wedding function that will be happening on, uh, the thirteenth of September. Uh, from three to nine PM.
Wait, I'm sorry, a what function?
Wedding.
Wedding.
It's a wedding function.
Okay.
It's on Chalk Rock Road?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve a Tin Can Cocktail Club, Cocktail Club LLC for a wedding event on September thirteenth, ninety Chalk Rock Road.
I'll second that.
Then seconded, and we threw a discussion. All in favor?
I'll send that down so you can sign that one as well. Thank you.
Didn't we have to sign something for Gemini cakes?
No, no, just approval.
There you go.
Okay, and then we've got a payable warrant or warrants?
Payable warrants.
Warrant.
We have one from the previous fiscal year and then one from this present fiscal year.
The move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any other business, folks?
Just, just wanted to report that I attended Jack Reese's Celebration of Life on Saturday. It was a very nice event, um, that was, um, done. His, his son and his grandson kind of each gave, it was two of his grandson gave eulogy, and it was a, was a very nice event. And then, um, you, I forwarded to you all from Joan Hall for Sam Hall's, uh, celebration. That would be on August seventeenth at the Kennebunkwood Conservation Trust. So I forward that information to everybody.
And Dan, thanks, Dan.
I didn't get that, Dan. I forwarded it late this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, very late this afternoon. Joan sent it to me like, I don't know, four o'clock or somewhere. Yep.
Anything else, anybody? I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn then.
A move at eight thirty-eight, seven thirty-eight PM. Second.
All in favor? We're done.